General overall view of the budget. And when she's done, what I'd like to do is have a conversation, a very specific conversation with you about teacher salaries. Because in the budget, last year, you put in a 1% increase across the board. But I'd like to talk to you a little bit about that and what that looks like and what our needs are. Okay, so we'll, we'll talk about that after Mary Ann presents. Okay, Mary Ann.
Good evening, Mary Ann Monas. Haven't seen some of you folks in a while, so it's good to see you, especially you, Mr. Jackson.
Thank you.
This evening, we will discuss the budget workshop and some of the items that we'll talk about is just a basic overview of our budget process. We'll talk about our enrollment projections, and we'll talk about the overall budget summary, which would include our revenues, staffing expenditures such as personnel, operating capital, and debt service. And then lastly, we'll talk about fund balance. And then I'll ask the principals to come up, and they will give a brief overview of their ESA funds, as well as some items that are happening at their schools. And then we will close it with open discussion and conclude our meeting for the evening. So the first thing I'd like to do is talk about our budget process, and I like to do this especially for our newcomers, so that they have a better understanding of what actually takes place when we build our budget. So typically, we start at our strategic planning session, and then from there, we identify the goals that we would like to accomplish, so that they're incorporated into our budgets now and in the future. In December, we typically do a budget kickoff meeting, and that's with all of the folks at the school that are involved, that play a part in the budget process. And we start off by releasing our capital asset plan, typically the same time. In January to February, the capital asset plans are due back, and I release the budget present, the budget projections to the school, so that they can be, begin building their operating and capital budgets within the new Tyler Munus system. In March, the operating projections close, and the submissions are reviewed by myself. And then we hold meetings with the superintendent, as well as with the city finance director, and the principals to go over their requests for budgets. In April, we typically hold our first budget workshop of the year, but unfortunately, this year, it's been delayed, so we're having that first workshop this evening. In May, we have a second budget workshop if needed, but at this time, it's been, it's been canceled. In June, the tentative budget is presented to the governing board for approval, because we do not have a, we do not have a governing board meeting in the month of July. So we present in June, just to get that tentative budget out there and approved, so we can begin ordering some items that the schools need prior to the start of the new fiscal year. In July, we begin to make additional adjustments as we learn things, especially from the legislative sessions. Things are beginning to get finalized, and we incorporate those into the budgets. And then finally, in August, we have an adopted budget, which is presented to the governing board for their approval, and at that time, it's incorporated into the City of Cape Coral's public hearings and final adoption in September. So it's a year-long process. Let's talk a little bit about enrollment numbers. Enrollment numbers, we are estimating our fiscal year '23 forecast at 3,278, and that's a projection of an increase of 66 students when compared to our fiscal year '22 third quarter calculation, or 95 students when compared to fiscal year '22 adopted numbers. And those are primarily associated with 54 additional students at Oasis High School and 11 students at Oasis Middle School. And enrollment is an extremely important, extremely important part of our budgets, because that's how the majority of our funding is determined or awarded. An overall budget overview, the overall budget for fiscal year '23 is actually 27.7 million. Included in that number is a $4 million, $4 million dollars associated with ESA III in fiscal year '23, bringing our total fiscal year '23 budget to 31.8 million. I broke out the ESA III funds, so that you could actually get an understanding of what we've spent in previous years. And in fiscal year '22 for revenues, while it says 29.1 million, that number includes 2.7 million associated with ESA II funds. So the actual number would, without the ESA II funds, is 26.4 million. If you look at it, our budgets have remained consistent since fiscal year 2021. On the expenditure side, our overall budget is 31.3 million, and again, $4 million of that in fiscal year '23 has been designated to ESA funds or ESA III funds. And those items, again, will be discussed by our principals, once they, they're here to talk. And so our overall budget without the ESA III funds is 27.2 million. When we look at fiscal year '23, our overall budget without ESA III funds, we actually had a surplus, a surplus of 620, I'm sorry, 670,000 to the good, and what we did was we added into the budgets two playgrounds, one at Oasis Elementary South, one at Oasis Elementary North, as well as that new athletic shock van. And we'll talk about these line items individual as we go throughout the presentation. As far as the surplus, what we had decided to do was set, begin to set funds aside, as Ms. Collins said, to plan for our future needs. With that being said, we have placed 200,000 in committed, in our committed fund balance in both fiscal years '23 and '24, as well as an additional 100 in fiscal year '25. And those committed funds will be set aside, so that we can begin planning for our textbook adoptions and our technology needs. Our revenues, where do our revenues come from? Well, our revenues, the majority of our revenues come from intergovernmental, intergovernmental revenues, and that makes up 89% of our revenues. What are interg, what are intergovernmental revenues? Well, those are our F E F P that we get for, per student, you know, allowances. It is the teacher salary allocations, our safe schools, mental health allocations, digital classrooms, student transportation, the National School Lunch Program, ACE dollars, and grants such as Title II and Title IV. The transfers in, those, those are comprised of internal funds. Miscellaneous dollars, those are 0.73%, and those are our short-term investment income, our contributions, donations, return check fees, loss books, rebates, facility rentals, and scrap sales from our computers. Charges for services is at 4.18%, and those comprise of student lunches, parking passes, and locker rentals. And then finally, our PICO dollars, and also known as public educational dollars, capital outlay, is 5.85%. Major revenue assumptions, we budget all major revenues at 95% per policy. What typically happens is we wait for the legislative sessions to end, and that's, that ends on April 30th, and then we, we wait to see what's changed, you know, and what's in, in the new laws, the state laws. And so we're still waiting to hear on a few things. We initially budgeted Florida Education Finance Program, F E F P, at $200 per full-time equivalent, and that was recently announced at $214.49, which would bring an additional $45,000 worth of revenue. Capital outlay, or public education capital outlay, also known as PICO, that is level-funded. It has been announced slightly higher than previous year, and it's, was announced at 195.8 million. We don't know the exact amount that we'll receive for our schools, since it's based on the number of charter schools that are out there. And then the ESA III grants, in fiscal year, in fiscal year '23, we budgeted $4 million, and fiscal year '24, we budgeted $2 million. And then we also expect $524,000 to maintain our teacher salary increases. Staffing changes, as we discussed earlier, there were eight positions that were affected by the city transition, so we, we reduced those positions within the school staffs, staffing numbers by eight, and then we will be adding 22 additional positions, and those will be associated, those are associated with ESA funding. And then if you wanted to see the positions that were affected, that those are noted Expenditures, where the money goes. Well, as you can see, the majority of our money, or 71% of our expenditures, go toward personnel cost. That's the largest component, and we will expand on personnel and these items in future Personnel compensation, our personnel budgets comprise of payroll, base payroll, ADP's, health plans, FRS, and workers' compensation. The health plans are budgeted with a 1.5% increase. Workers' comp rates do reflect a slight decrease. The bus drivers go from 401 to 361, teachers from 43 cents to 40, and food service from 377 to 367. The Florida retirement system has an increase from 10.82% to 11.02. However, we won't know those final rates until July, when they're announced. We did budget a 1% increase to all staff, and we did make some adjust, adjustments to some of the charter school support staff. Substitutes, we, we put an increase for substitutes from $14 to $15.25, and the substitute bus drivers go to $15. In addition, the food service and transportation areas will receive five paid holidays. And then we are preparing in anticipation of the minimum wage to go to $15 per hour.
What were bus drivers before?
They were, the sub-bus drivers, 1469, 1460.
[inaudible]
Yes, yep. The elementary and secondary school emergency relief, also known as ESER, well, the funds from the, funds from ESER were intended to help school districts safely reopen from the pandemic. In 2021, our schools received notice of a grant award in the amount of 2.7 million. In April of 2022, the district notified us that they received funds for ESA III, again, in the amount of 6 million, 4 million which is budgeted in fiscal year '23, and 2 million which is budgeted in fiscal year '24. And again, the principals will recap on those items that they'll be using those funds On the capital side, our major capital improvements include the bus lease, Tyler Munus HRS payroll system, the purchase of the new shock van, and the playground equipment, both at Oasis Elementary South and Oasis Elementary North. Debt service is minimal. We have that on our copy lease, and the copy lease expires on December 1st, 2023. Our fund balance, our total fund balance at the beginning of fiscal year '23 is 11.7 million. Out of that 11.7 million, we have to follow policy and set aside 5% of our annual expenditures. So the 5% in reserves equates to 1.37 million, leaving us with 10.3 million as available fund balance, and then we've also set aside the 200,000 in committed.
If I could just ask the question right now, 5% of 31, 32 million, that's 1.6, I see 1.3, so is it 5% of a different number than what I-
Oh, I'm sorry, the 5, it's the 5% before the ESA funds.
Before the ESER?
Yes.
Thank you.
Yep, no problem. And then we'll set aside $200,000 in committed funds, as we recently just discussed, for the textbooks and the Chrome, and technology needs. So after today's meeting, what we will do is we'll continue to update the budget based on the general appropriations as they're announced. We need to account for any ESA II balances from the current fiscal year '22, so that those are carried forward into the new fiscal year, as well as any rollover purchase orders and any year-end items. And then, once we compile that, the fiscal year '23, '25 proposed budget will be presented on June 20, June 14th, I'm sorry, for approval. So with that being said, I'm going to turn it over to the principals, and then we'll come back and have discussions.
May I ask a question?
Certainly.
When do the bus payments start, that the city ordered the buses, and you start repaying that back?
That's not in budget until next year.
Next year, right?
Yes.
They shouldn't get delivered till January, seven months.
Right, right, so, but I didn't know if you were trying to prepay, they didn't tell us that you were, but I just wanted to make sure.
Nope, that's in, it's in the budget for next year.
Okay.
And when the new, when the new lease took effect, was that July 1st of 2022?
July 1st of this year, '22.
So we adjusted our numbers based on-
They did.
At new lease?
Yes.
And that's reflective?
Yep.
Okay, great, great. Thank you.
Okay, and Dr. Burton, you are first.
It's easier, it's easier to go first.
Yeah, not here. Okay, good evening, everyone. I'm Christina Burton. I'm the proud principal of Oasis High School. Before I begin with my brief summary, I always want to thank Mary Ann, because she puts up with all four people hammering her with questions, a lot of questions, and then I call her with repeat questions. So thank you for your patience. And I do want to say, in regards to Jackie, she is hands down one of the best boss I've ever worked for, besides my original mentor, who made me want to become a principal. So please understand that we all, we have some pretty energetic discussions at times, because you guys have high expectations, and Jackie has high expectations, and she looks at us across the table, and we all kind of smile and swallow, and then we go back to our offices and take many deep breaths, and then we, we go ahead and get going. And I have to tell you that the hard work that comes from our teachers goes up to us and to Ms. Collins, and it also comes back down. So there is a collective efficacy of hard work that exists here, that I can tell you exists in almost nowhere else I've ever worked. So I just want to say that. My ESER summary, we use ESER, thank goodness, we're allowed to supplant some things that are normally big-ticket items for schools. So for us, in the next couple of years, for ESER III will be, a lot of it is textbooks, math and science textbooks, I can tell you, at the secondary level, because of the variety of sciences and math that we teach, that averages about $75,000 per subject area adoption. CTE curriculum and licenses, and then software to support intervention. For technology for the high school, we definitely jumped on this chance to do some massive improvements in term, in terms of technology. Chromebook replacement, basically needed a full cycle, and don't forget, we've added about 150 students in the last four years, three years. And then Promethean boards for all of the classroom, our smart boards are almost 14 years old, so it's time for them to, they've done their job. Printers, and then we upgraded to computer labs, because it's definitely good. Those are showpieces in our, in our school, in addition to the STEM labs, supported by Dr. Omenson. Staffing, we have a new clinic person and paras to help with supervision and to support students, and then interventionists to help with students that are struggling or behind in credits. Training and tuning up tutoring opportunities for staff, and then also tutor students, ACT and SAT training, believe it or not, both of those, ACT offers a certification for teachers. And then obviously, since we use those two tests as concordant scores in place of any state assessments that may or may not be evolving, that is a very important area to be able to prepare stu, prepare students for and tutor them in. After-school tutoring, summer school tutoring, and supplies for all of those programs. Lastly, professional development for our staff, several days of that next year, staff stabilization pay, and then sick pay for any type of COVID sick leave. That is the, the general, the general summary. Does anyone have any questions? No? Okay.
Just a quick question for, how would you see the retention of teachers for this upcoming year, and what kind of vacancies are you experiencing?
Okay, so, so I have a long list of people that are leaving, and we have, I have prided myself over the last four years of averaging only four to six people. So I just sat down and wrote this out. I have one, one, two, three, four, five, six, that are moving either out of this district or out of state. They are either, I'll be honest, they're like selling and cashing out, going ahead and taking the money and run. I have two that are retiring. I have four that have left throughout the year and left education period. And then we are adding four positions. So it is, it's a pretty significant turnover for us. It's probably going to jump up to 10 to 12%. High school is tough, and it's getting tougher in terms of graduation rates and the demands on students, and those, you know, those trickle down to demands on teachers, and we have a very demanding, we have a demanding community, rightfully so, and our teachers do everything they can do to meet that demand. I'm a very, I have a lot of high expectations as a principal. I'm very open and honest about that, but we have some really good people that are leaving, to be honest. I don't, and they're, they're moving. I keep track of them as they go. It makes my heart hurt a lot. They're people that I'm going to miss, and they're very valued members of our staff. But when other districts pay more, I can't compete with five and six and seven and $10,000.
Differences, yeah.
Do you anticipate having a problem filling those positions?
Yes.
And do you have a plan in case we don't get those teachers? No?
No, unless I unenroll students from my school. I mean, we have, we have applicants. I was, I was at an event, I'll be very honest, for my son, who goes to school in a different district, you know, north of here, and it's one of the best schools in, in that county, it is the best elementary school in that county. It's comparable with OES or OEN, and she was talking about, normally she has 30 to 35 applicants per vacancy, and everybody wants to go work at that school, you know, just like our elementary schools. She's averaging five to nine. I'm averaging zero to three. So it is-
Good.
And people are not graduating with teaching degrees, and we, you know, we've talked about some creative ways, I will say. We have talked about creative ways, especially for some of the CTE offerings, the career and technical. There are district certifications, or where more so you can recruit some business people, especially to go into the, like, the graphic design, the robotics, things like that. So we've talked about some creative certifications in terms of those individuals, but some of the, just the hardcore language arts teachers and math teachers, especially that high-level math, there's not a whole lot of people that walk around out there, honestly, that want to teach calculus and ACE Math II and III. I mean, that's, that's a rare breed.
And I would imagine you don't have a pool of substitutes that are in that field either.
Nope.
Yeah, so I was going to save the question to the end, but since we're on the topic, you know, this, this is what I do for a living, for a major corporation, and I will tell you that we cannot retain people across the Midwest and all of North America, and that would be the only thing I'm going to question on the budget, is, is there enough for retention? We're giving double-digit increases to factory workers. So I, I do see an issue there, especially with the amount of turnover you already have. I don't see it stopping with inflation. I see it increasing, and based on the people I'm talking to, and, and our folks, probably in HR here, will probably say, you're going to have to carry additional people just to make up for that. So it's maybe something we need to kick around a little bit. It's just a reality. So I think we had 600,000 in there for raises, not enough, my observation.
Yeah, I'm sure we're going to go through that. We'll go through that.
Yeah. Dr. Burton, I just wanted to, so the four who are just leaving education in general, was it, were they all due to salaries? Okay, was there any other factors that need to be considered, should be considered? None that, none that I can share publicly. Okay. A lot, if, a lot of that is due, I mean, it's, it's anything from family, you know, high school schedule's hard, we start really early. Coming back at the beginning of the year, it's like we reopened three times, and just getting through the first month of the school year, and then the second month, and then into October. I mean, I'll be, I texted my, my sister one day and just said, I don't know how we can keep up with this pace. So, and, and you've, and you know, as a principal, you feel the weight of that, of the emotions and the exhaustion of your teachers. I do think it has gotten better, but where we are in October is maybe where we are normal, we're in February or March, just getting, like you said, Dr. Manaya, like, we're kind of back to normal, right? But the effects, I think, are going to be long-term, and way more than I could have ever predicted, and this is my 25th year.
I want to add that we have, we are still experiencing COVID, COVID trauma, post-trauma problems with our students. I'm sure, McKees, you understand that. It's, it's a whole different ballgame, and it's, it's a different environment now for teachers, and there is a lot of stress and a lot of extra demands on them, and that, that is weighing on, on their decision to stay in the field.
Absolutely.
And-
I don't, I don't want to paint a bleak picture at all, but I want to be very honest
with you, that like, that's, this, we are facing it here, but everybody is, up and down the coast, even though there's districts that pay more, because they have tax referendums or those types of abilities, like Sarasota, Manatee, Hillsborough, and Pinellas, you know, some of those bigger ones up there, and that have larger tax bases. I can tell you that, you know, we all talk about hiring, and we all talk about working very hard, and some people have a lot of applicants for some positions and some that aren't. In the high school, it gets very specialized, and so you, and you, you really have to want to work with high school kids, because they, we have many adults, that's all I'm going to say. So they have to be willing to learn, and it's not necessarily been a year where that happens all the time.
Mr. Campbell?
Right, so a nice way to say it, so I'll shut up now. Okay, thank you.
No, no. You have a-
Oh, sorry.
So you feel like this is a district-wide problem?
This is a nationwide problem.
Nationwide problem, absolutely.
And it is a district-wide problem. They have 19 pages of vacancies. We need a counselor, because mine's moving out of state. It's been posted for a month. I have had one applicant, they have 19 counselor vacancies in the district.
Did you have anybody that was moving out of our school into the Lee County School District?
No. Charter to charter, but I think they're leaving that position as well for private business.
Okay.
Just wondering, I wonder if it has anything to do with our housing prices and rent? I don't know.
I can, that's two, that's two, three of our people that are moving out of state. So.
It's better, though.
Right.
So, no, it's, it's a national epidemic, I'll say that. And I was, you know, I wanted to be a teacher from the time I was 11, but I can tell you that I don't think too many of those people exist anymore. You good?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everybody. Donnie Hopper, principal at Oasis Middle. So I was trying to put together the numbers of my staff and personnel leaving, I'll do that at the end, but first, congratulations to Mrs. Collins for the amazing job. We appreciate all that you do, I think you know that. We are a strong team, and thanks to all of you for volunteering, welcome to the board, for doing what you do, because it takes your leadership as well, so we appreciate that from the board. With ESER III, the funds that we are spending at Oasis Middle, definitely heavy in textbooks and curriculum for our students, so we'll be doing our math adoption, social studies material, science material. We do our progress monitoring content with iReady and Star through that money, and we will be purchasing about 700 Chromebooks, so almost all of the Chromebooks will be replaced, which will be a great jump on that refresh. refresh piece that we have to do. We are putting a lot of money into staff, to having support people to help with our students who are struggling. This money was really earmarked from the beginning to close the gap from the, the learning loss that kids had from being at home related to the pandemic. So we want to focus on those students, and we're going to bring in more hands to do that in the area of reading, in the area of math, and strictly intervention support. That will be in the, in the way of teachers that are certified, but also in our paraprofessionals that we can bring on as well. We have money set aside for tutoring. We have money set aside for professional development for teachers. We'll be very focused on Marzano and the practices from Marzano this coming school year. We will do enrichment activities. So we set aside some money to make sure we can keep doing the great musicals that we do, the arts program that we have, our garden club, any extras that we can do. Also, an allowable expense to make sure we're providing those enrichment activities for students. And for in the classroom, we'll have printers for our teachers. We'll have document cameras for our teachers. And we do need a couple more Promethean boards to get every single classroom done on that refresh program. And that's the majority of the items in the ESER III for OMS. You had mentioned staff turnover, and I don't remember if I had said this a couple months ago when I was up here, but we definitely saw a hit this year. As Dr. Britton said, we take it personally when we have staff that leave. It's our family, and we want our family to stick together. I had seven teachers leave mid-year this year. I've never had that, and I've been doing this 25 years. We were fortunate to know people. Every teacher we brought in was from Lee County. And we filled every single position with a highly qualified, certified teacher, and they were willing to come join us. They want to be part of what we're doing. Will we have more positions as we move into the summer? I have at least four positions, maybe five or six. And some of that is ESER-based. We want to get those extra people in, but we have to fill the regular classroom positions first. Applicants, four applicants so far. We have four jobs posted. And those four jobs are really five or six, because if I post an ELA, a language arts position, I may have two openings. I have an ESE opening. I have two math openings. Four total applicants. And that, that's a big, big task ahead of us. So we are able to recruit because I think people know they want to be part of our system once they know we have the positions available. So PR and marketing is a big piece. There was mention about increase in salary for teachers and paras and support. I think that's super important. Mrs. Collins has been instrumental in moving us forward in pay for all staff. But is there work still to be done? Of course. And I think Mr. Campbell pointed out, the housing market, that is a big factor in why people are leaving this area. They cannot afford to stay in some of the homes and even the rental apartments that are going up when rent starts at 2,000, 2,100, 2,200. That is unbelievably tough, especially for some of our single moms and dads that are out there. So, any questions?
I think Mr. Campbell, you're in.
Yeah, so you have 65 and a half, from who the half person is, FTE right now. How many of those are teachers?
Tell me, we have 65.
Full-time employees. How many of those are teachers?
I have about 51 certified staff.
51 teachers, staff. How many subs on average during a week?
That's a great question. Today, I think there were three in the building back at the height of COVID, eight to 10.
Okay, so let's say you average five subs on any given day out of 51 employees or, or staff. I don't know. It, it seems high to me, but, and then what's the average length to fill those open positions?
Four to six weeks at least.
Four to six weeks.
When we, when they become vacant during the school year.
So you have five subs teaching a class for four to six weeks. Start adding that up. That's how I think this discussion gets a little more difficult, because that's not the norm, right?
It has never been the norm in a typical school. At least my typical school.
Just trying to get a grasp of it.
It's significant, and it is damaging to students and their education. We need full-time certified teachers in there with students. I think we all know that. Like, I'll have extra positions for next year. They won't exist if I can't fill my regular classroom positions. So it's quite, quite challenging. Good. Thank you all.
Good evening. Mary Beth Gresik, Principal Oasis Elementary South. My ESER review is very similar to what everyone else was talking about, but I also want to, before I begin, echo what everyone else has been saying. As challenging as the last few years have been, it has been a true honor to work with Mrs. Collins and, and my colleagues. We, we've really pulled together, and I feel like we've really, we've got a great team, and our teachers have been amazing. It's, it really is an honor to work here. When you hear about all the things going on in the other districts and stuff, it's, as hard as it is, it's, it is a pleasure. My ESER review is very similar. Most of my money is going towards personnel and textbooks. We're doing two interventionists next year to help with learning loss and help students make academic gains. And we are increasing our long-term subs. That's been very beneficial for us this year, to have subs on campus every day so that they can jump in. And on the days that we don't need them, then they go in and they help students who are Level 1 and are Level 2 students, kind of giving them little mini pull-out lessons. For our textbooks, we're, it's math textbook adoption year, so we'll be getting math textbooks. Next year is science. We've also put a lot of money into extracurriculum for our after-school programs that we've been doing for students. And then we also are planning some summer camps this year so that our students don't regress over the summer, because that can be an issue. And another big purchase that we made is a program called iReady, which we use for diagnostic purposes. And then they have a variety of teacher resources called the Teacher Toolbox that we use to help provide individual intervention for our students. And another portion of our money is, oh, and we also did really great reading, which is a phonics program, which has been, it's made huge changes, especially in K-1. We put quite a bit of money towards extended learning, so we were able to offer a lot of different ELA and math programs throughout the year for our students. And then that money also is going towards our summer programs as well. For technology, we made a hu, a bunch of purchases, a series of purchases for Chromebooks. And we've just completed all of our Promethean Board Refresh, so our teachers have brand-new technology in the room that they are loving. We also refreshed our teacher technology and printers throughout the building. And that's, that's pretty much a good summary of what we, what we purchased. Any questions?
Can you review your staffing?
Yes. So for this year, we did have one teacher leave mid-year. And for the end of this year, the teachers reporting that, who are not returning for next year, I have three teachers retiring after a long and, and wonderful career. And then I have one teacher who's moving out of state. And I believe there's another teacher who's leaving for personal reasons. But that's it. We have, we were in a little bit better position. We were able to, we've replaced, I think, three or four of those positions already.
Do you have a hard time with getting applicants?
Yes, yes. We used to, just like Dr. Britton was saying, we used to have, you know, 20 or 30 people apply, so this time I think we had maybe eight or nine. So, yeah, we're seeing a big difference. Any other questions? Thank you.
Thank you.
Kevin Brown, Oasis Elementary North. I was not going to congratulate Mrs. Collins, but now I'm going to look weird not doing that. So congratulations, Mrs. Collins. No, just joking. You know how we all feel about you. Thank you, Ms. Tate and Ms. Frank for saying the nice comments about us administrators. We are, we like to have fun and work hard, and we do a lot for our, our community, along with our teachers, but it is a great group to work with, and we do get each other through some interesting times these last few years. So our, our biggest focus at Oasis North is to combat learning loss. We're going to, we order textbooks as far as intervention programs. We're going to concentrate on the math and science textbooks as well. We're going to add two additional interventionists. Sorry, I'm just emotional after this. I don't know what's going on. So add two additional interventionists for ELA and math. And then we're also, we, how we kind of run to combat, like, the COVID and everything like that, we have eight to 10 long-term subs on campus every single day. They work with students. If a teacher goes out, they move into that team. So how I set it up was, we had a kindergarten long-term sub, and if a kindergarten teacher went out, they filled in for that role. Then it got real bad, so sometimes that kindergarten sub also then had to go into another classroom in a different grade level. But that's kind of how we set up our, our long-term subs. Tutoring and planning, as well as the summer camp like Ms. Gresik talked about, technology. We have Chromebooks that are coming. We have teacher desktops and printers that are also, we're going to be updating, which is needed. And last thing I want to say, this is obviously a working document. It's, things come up, different grants come up. We had a K to 3 reading grant that I was going to use, or that I'm using now in replace of those, some of those intervention programs that I get to use for that. So I get to take some of this ESER money and move it somewhere else. So it's always a makeshift plan, but these are the areas that we're going to really focus on. As far as my staffing, I had one teacher leave mid-year. She moved with her new spouse to a different state. And I had one teacher who is resigning this year. So everyone has, I, I have to make an official announcement on who I'm replacing that person with. We've added two, the two ESER positions that we've added, I've already hired. Like Mary Beth said, there was around 10 applicants we maybe saw. And I got very, very lucky. I got two exceptional ones that have 20-plus years of experience, one from Illinois, another one that's been local. And then I'm looking at the last position that I need to fill still.
Any questions?
So Dr. Collins, it would seem that maybe the staffing is more stable at the elementary level. I'm just curious as to why. Could be a lot of things, I guess.
Um, it's always been that way. We usually have more applicants at the elementary level. When, when teachers graduate from college, FGC, CU, FSW, we find that a lot of those graduates want to teach in elementary. So we get more applicants, and they, they're just very comfortable. They're teaching, you know, seven subject areas. It's not as specialized as when you get into secondary education. You, you have to be specially certified, you have to know, you know, higher-level coursework. And I think that has a lot to do with it. Do you want to add anything onto that?
I was going to add one thing that I didn't say and should have. Four of my seven left for virtual, so they believe they can stay home and teach 200 to 300 students. Their caseload is much more significant, but that was the choice they made. Money wasn't much different. They wanted that opportunity to be home. And lots of situations, like Dr. Britton pointed out, whether it's for their family, whether it's for he, health reasons, or thinking they're getting a better deal by being able to stay home. But the virtual component, at least at the middle school, was a big draw. And they all went to the same company.
Yeah, I was going to say, our largest program is elementary ed. So, you know, that's...
Your program is elementary-based?
Yes, for, for students coming in and wanting to be teachers, so.
Is up for, what, I'm sorry?
Is elementary education. That's typically...
Do you have a lot of people in the program, or?
Yeah.
I wouldn't say we have a lot of people in the program. I would say it's our largest program, but it's also a, there's a recruitment issue there too. A national, you know, a national shortage, even in people who are coming into the profession.
Thank you.
Hi. Oh, what? Yes, okay. So I've been listening to everybody speak, and it seems like the universal thing was retention and new recruitment, for sure, seems to be a big issue that we're facing now and we're going to continue to face, it seems like. I think there's two questions that we have to ask ourselves. It seems, I also heard a lot of people speak that it's becoming harder and harder to meet the demands that we're placing on our teachers. So what can we do to help alleviate those demands without compromising our standards? And I know that's a big, general question, but I think it's one that we have to ask.
That's a very good question.
Also, how do we distinguish ourselves in ways other than my, maybe monetary, to attract new recruits? Because monetary is big, of course. It's probably the number one, but there's other ways of recruiting that we maybe need to start looking at.
I think we've been very creative in how we've been recruiting over time, especially now. We've been on social media. We've, we've employed platforms that we have never considered before. We're advertising on our own personal LinkedIn accounts. We're, we're using Indeed, we're using Ed Weekly. We have tried to reach out as best we can to recruit. They're just not necessarily, they're not out there. We, we try to, when we have interviews and we get people to come in, we, we sell. We've got a great benefits package. It costs a lot less for benefits in our system than it does in Lee County. We have a lot of flexibility. There's room for creativity. A lot of the bureaucracy that you have in Lee County doesn't fall on the teachers in our system, so we are truly different in that respect. We have, it's a small system, a family-sized appeal, but we're a public school, so a lot of the requirements that, that, that we have to uphold are public school requirements. Can we alleviate those pressures? No. I mean, a big pressure is the paperwork that's involved with a child that is falling behind and they're in the MTSS process. There's a huge amount of paperwork that, that follows that child to show us, or to show the parents and the state of Florida that we're tracking their progress, we're giving them tests, we're, we're marking progress points every, you know, eight to 16 weeks. We can't escape that. That is part of being a public school system. The biggest issue we're finding now is people that are leaving the profession or not coming into the profession and being able to compete financially with other school districts for salaries. We have gotten to the point now where we, 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 as Mark Mason puts it, we're on a fixed income. We do not have the revenue sources that Lee County has. And I compare myself to Lee County because they're our sponsoring district. They have the sales tax referendums, they have the local discretionary dollars, they have impact fees that, you know, they receive funds for. We don't receive any of those, that, that funding. We get state funding, FEFP, and it's limited. We get limited PICO funding, and that's for, that's for capital. The city's been most gracious to help relieve our debt, but that money is just, it's just not, there's no excess, there's no excess funding. It's been used to, you know, we're, we're paying the city back for chargebacks for our employees. We need to have budgets in place for facilities and for IT. It, it's just, we don't have the funding that we need. So what I can tell you is that our, we, we gave everybody a 1% raise across the board. That cost us, for teachers only, including their overheads, which is the increase in their FICA, their Medicaid, their, all the, the actual overheads. It's $105,559. To give the 1% increases to the support staff, including their overheads, is another $29,000. Transportation, the increase that we needed to give to be competitive, because we absolutely have to in transportation, is another $29,734. Food service, we had to bump them up to five days of vacation days, and we had to add another position to help Danielle. That's $69,700. So we're looking at about 254 some odd dollars just in that 1% that we had budgeted. Now, I, I have to say, I asked Mary Ann to add in an extra $50,000 in that amount that we would take from our surplus so that we can do another pay parity factorization into the group that we have, that is still lacking that pay parity compensation. The conversation with Mark Mason was that that is not sustainable long-term. I will not support that. So before I go any further, and he's our financial guru, I want, I want you to refer to the packet of information that I gave you. This is what Lee County is proposing. That is their tax bargaining agreement proposal. This is what Lee County is proposing, that is their tax bargaining agreement proposal. Please take a look at that and I'll explain that to you. On the left-hand side of the sheet is the retention bonuses that their employees are getting based on the ESSR grant funding. Does everybody have that in front of them? So it's based on length of employed time. And as you can see, it's a pretty, they're pretty hefty bonuses. $2,500, $2,200, $1,900, depending on how long you've been within the, in the district. We have built in, we just paid out an ESSR bonus of $1,000 per employee for every employee. Bus drivers, food service workers, paraprofessionals, everybody got it. Principals, they did receive another $1,000 bonus for teachers and principals only earlier this year. We'd like to give them another, we call it premium pay bonus of $1,000 per, per employee in the fall of next year. So that would be a bonus of about $3,000 if you're a teacher, principal, $2,000 for everyone else. That really doesn't compare to what Lee County's presenting in the way of ESSR retention bonuses, but that's, that's what we can afford to do.
Sorry.
Now, the five, the $500,000 that Marion mentioned in her presentation, that was the teacher salary allocation, that's from the state of Florida. That's something separate.
Got it.
And that has been coming in over the last couple of years. It needs to be maintained by the state of Florida so that we can continue to pay our teachers starting salary of 47.5.
Is that guaranteed though, Ms. Collins?
Nothing, I don't think in the state of Florida is ever guaranteed. It's, it's, it's an allocation. It has come, it, it should continue to come, but we don't, we don't know from one year to the next. We wait and see and keep our fingers crossed. I would assume it would need to have, it would have to be a part of the overall budget from the Department of Education to maintain these, 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 this salary increase.
May, may I ask a question on revenue that might help this discussion? It seems to, a little less than 90% of our revenue comes from intergovernmental funding. How much of that is property tax-based? Anybody have any idea?
Local property tax?
Any property tax.
We, we receive.
Not, not a bit.
FEFP money from the state of Florida, it's property tax. It's, it's, it is. But we don't receive any of the local discretionary dollars that we pay in our bills.
Correct.
From one year to the next, no.
That all goes to Lee County on your, that's what you pay.
No, correct, but a lot of it still is property tax-based. Am I wrong in that?
Well, our taxes are what fund the FEFP for the state of Florida. I'm, I'm confused as to what you're asking. Property taxes fund the, the FEFP funding overall, yes, they do. But we only receive that. Not the local discretionary, not the sales tax referendum.
No, I understand.
Not even the impact fee charges that are paid come to us.
So what is the definition of intergovernmental then?
Those are our state shares, primarily our state shares.
So it, it is our state shares?
Yeah.
Which come from what source?
Which is.
I'm just trying to get down to exactly how it's funded. Is it funded by the lottery, is it funded by?
It's funded by the lottery.
Yeah, it's funded by the lottery, but it's, it's, the number is calculated based on the, the outcome of those legislative sessions. So the state budget, whatever they have in the state budget, that's how it's funded.
So it is funded by property taxes?
Well, the state, yeah, the, the state of Florida education budget is, yes, tax-funded.
No, I, I understand that, I'm, I'm just trying, I'm. Yeah, I'm just trying to point out that as we move forward and property taxes raise, they have excess revenues. If they go down, then they will have less revenues. So as we're moving forward, you think about that.
But the state has not increased FEFP over time at the rate that it should. It has been very under.
I understand.
Budgeted over time, that's what we face.
Yep. Last year, I think it was $53 per FEFP. So to, for it to be announced at 214, that's a pretty good increase.
But not, it's not enough, it's just not enough. So if you look on this sheet, on the right-hand side, this is proposed. These are proposed increases to base salary for teachers. This is what counts. They're looking at a $200 for all employees in addition to the following. If you worked 47 years, you get another $1,200. 14 to 19 years, you get $2,200. If you go down to the Jay Ratzys' base salary increase, they're getting an additional $2,000. There's another longevity, longevity supplement, which doesn't go to base, but it's another bonus of a couple thousand dollars. And then they're increasing their salary schedule, their hiring salary schedule by these amounts. So this is a significant financial plan in place to increase salaries for Lee County schoolteachers. I think, and I know Marion agrees and the principals agree, that our first step is to increase our salary schedule to match what Lee County is offering. And then true up all of our employees to make sure that they match that salary schedule. We can't have existing employees paid, paid less than what we would hire a new employee at, it doesn't make sense.
But that's not in the current budget?
It is.
It is.
Because for the mere fact that that 1% that we gave teachers, it's roughly, it's an average of about $500, that will true up just about everyone, with the exception of a few. If we did our hiring salary, if we did our hiring correctly based on our hiring steps from the day we started operations. And I believe we did, but I'm not necessarily sure. Because the problem is our Chronos system only keeps track of the length of time teachers have been employed within our system. So what we have to do, and maybe Angie can help explain this better, we have to go through everybody, every employee's file and, and make sure that we have validated years of experience outside the system and inside the system. And that those, that length of time that they've been teaching matches where they are on the hiring salary schedule. I believe we're pretty accurate, with the exception of a few. So that's gonna take, that's gonna be a process for us to go through so that we act, we, we accurately true up our hiring salary schedule. So you have a copy in your packet of the 2122 hiring salary schedule. This is just for hiring employees. And it says, the one at the top says approved by the school board, you approved it in last April. This is a, this is a duplicate of what Lee County does because we have to remain competitive. So this is based on their salary schedule. And as you can see, I have the wrong schedules in front of me. There's a lot of compression because we have 14 years of the salary based at 47.5. So according to the new proposed plan based on Lee County, we would, we would bump teachers up between years four and 13 and 14 and 19. Do you have a, a correct copy, Marion? So this actually, if I did my math correctly, based on what I have in Chronos, which is, I'm pretty sure it's relatively accurate, it looks like 31 teachers need to be adjusted. And the 1% should adjust them pretty much to, to true us up with this hiring salary schedule. So I believe that's our first step. We're almost there, we're gonna need a little extra funding to make sure that we get there accurately. Now, my second piece of advice was that we take an extra amount of money from our surplus or from reserves and we use that to bump them up additionally based on years of service. So we've got a group of teachers that are in years now, four through 7.9, that never got a pay parity bump like the rest of our teaching staff has. They're the ones that are due another bump. And I'd like to bump them up another $500 minimum, which would be a, a cost of $15,005.
When you say surplus, are you talking about the committed fund balance or are you talking about the reserve? Where is the surplus?
Okay, let me, let me, let me go back to this.
The 200,000? Okay.
Let's talk about the surplus for a minute. So if you look at this slide, if you look at the bottom of the slide, operating surplus, we have, because of ESSR funding, because ESSR has supplanted a lot of the software, textbooks, Chromebooks, we have a surplus of, of $420,000. When you minus out the playgrounds, you minus out the shark van, you minus out the H, the, the new Chronos system for timekeeping that the city wants us to upgrade to, we have a surplus of $420,000. Marion, does that include the, okay, so, and that does not include our savings plan. We're gonna save $100,000 and put it in committed for textbooks and $100,000 and put it in committed for Chromebooks. So we have a surplus of 420,000. Am I right about that?
The 420, and then we're gonna set aside 250 outside of that for the textbooks.
Okay, so if we set aside 250,000 for those savings plans, we're now down to about $200,000 in surplus. So we have 200, we have about $200,000 in surplus.
Not accounted.
Correct. If you look at FY 2024, you go, go down, we have $755,000 in surplus, which looks great. But we still have to save for textbooks, Chromebooks. We'd like to buy another shark van so that we can save on transportation costs for our smaller teams. So that goes down significantly as well, am I right?
Yep.
Now, we could. Right. So these are, it looks like we have a significant amount of money that we can put towards teacher salaries. But when you look at FY 25 and you go down to the surplus, this is probably more along the lines of a normal year. That's what we're going to be looking like generally. Now, of course, we have the cost of inflation and the cost of all our benefits and our, and our services for teachers that are gonna rise over time. But we don't have a large surplus, we're not going to after these two years of ESSR funding. We're not gonna have a, a large surplus. And we have to be very careful that if we, if we expend that down to nothing, we're gonna be back in the same spot we were in before the city helped us with our lease payment. And the city won't be happy.
Did the, have we presented to Lee County School District what capital needs we have?
I have given that to the city management and I have not heard further.
Right, because they, they offered to look in to see how they could assist us. Whether they do or not, it's a different story, but they made a request a few months ago. And so that's a pending opportunity for additional funding, right?
So we, we did ask for a meeting and we were told that we were going to have it and then it was way late. And so now that with the new school superintendent and the whole thing on the referendum as to voting for a new superintendent and you have all these school board seats up, it's a very interesting time to be trying to negotiate any new funds. I can tell you, I don't know how many of you are going to forums, but the new candidates, especially the ones representing Cape Coral, are very pro in helping us to facilitate what you're discussing. So it's gonna be a matter of who gets on the board. And I don't think they're gonna negotiate with us at all with this current board. Because we've already, we've already dealt with that. And the new superintendent's too new, he hasn't, have you met him?
Not yet.
Yeah, so, I mean, he's not even out there yet, they had a reception for him and so it's, it's gonna become very political very soon.
So, so what I'm trying to tell the board is, is that as Mark says, you're on a fixed income. You don't have the same kind of revenue streams that the Lee County School District has. We don't have, we are worried about teacher shortages and, and being able to, to fill our teacher vacancies. Funding is important though for us. We have to stay competitive. We can, we can talk all we want about all the great things that our system offers, but in this day more than ever, it's about being able to afford to live here and being able to pay your rent. So I'm not sure that the city realizes how important it is for our teachers to be, our salaries to be competitive. They absolutely have to be. So whatever money that we have, so the 1%, we need to true up this salary, this hiring salary schedule. We need to recognize all years of employment because we're seeing people coming from Illinois and Pennsylvania. They're making 70, 80,000 a year in a teaching salary, they're coming down here and they're making half. So what we decided to do was, like Lee County, they're, they're, they're going to take in all years of teaching experience, not just 10 years of Florida only. So we've got to true everybody up to, to that salary schedule first, that's key. If there's any money left over, I'd like to put it towards that group that needs the pay parity, years four to 7.9. And that's based on Angie Klein's last pay parity and veteran teacher review, that, that was an extensive process. So I have about $15,500 that Mark Mason is, is saying that he's willing to pull from that surplus to put towards that. Because as you can see, once we get past these ESSR years, that surplus will dwindle. And that's what we have to play with.
We don't have to vote on that tonight, we're just, Ari, no, because the budgets aren't done yet. Or are they?
No, you, if you give us direction on, you, you agree to kind of proceed in that fashion, then I can go back and take care of it. And then that will be presented in June.
For, for you to adopt.
To adopt, that's correct, okay.
Do we need, is this like where you need a motion or you just need a general?
You just need.
I mean, I, I, I'm, I'm in agreement with that, to move that forward.
I, I don't think you have a choice, as long as, as Mark, I mean, he is our financial guidance. So if he's saying that we have that money and we can use it, then I, then we have to.
Yeah, but it's, I know we only have an unlimited budget, but that even doesn't get us, I think, over the goal line. I mean, the revenues are going down every year without the ESSR funds. 25 is, you're at 28 million versus 31 million next year.
That's, that's without the inflation of ESSR, yeah.
Yeah.
And that's, that's stayed steady. It doesn't, it doesn't increase like it should in order to help us meet our expenditures.
Yeah, the, the 1% is, I, I, I know, by the way, you, you guys have prepared a pretty good budget, but it just seems like we're gonna come up a shortage with our teachers if we only do the 1%.
We will.
But I know you've given us the best option you can because it has to come from somewhere. What is left, the operating income, there's not much you can pull from there.
When, when you, when you did the playgrounds, is that, when we briefly chatted, you said there was resurfacing the playgrounds? That, did this budget, does that include that or no?
Well, that's actually very good news because those, the playgrounds need to be demolished sooner rather than later. We looked into repairing them, but the expense to repair and the length of time that it would last wasn't financially sound, a sound decision. So the city is, is going to come in, they're going to demolish the two playground structures for us. And that in itself was probably, I don't know, 20, 25, $30,000. So they'll demolish, they'll remove, they'll flatten, we'll have space. And we're talking about, you know, $100,000 to, to build a playground is not a lot of money. So the cost to demolish and remove and flatten, that's gonna be taken on by the city, which is wonderful. We don't have to have playground structures.
But those are ESSR funds and they need to be spent, right?
They can't come out of ESSR.
They can't.
We've, we've asked and that is, that is not.
Okay.
Approved, an approved expenditure.
So did you build in the debt, the, the funding for the playgrounds?
We're taking it out of the surplus. It's a one-time expense, can be taken out of that surplus, no problem.
So we can, but if we had other, other funding for that, what, what would we do with that funding?
Well, we have to remember, anytime we give a salary increase, it's, it's a, it's, it compounds. We, it, we, you know, it's an expense that, that happens every year plus some, so we always have to maintain it. And that's when the surplus comes, you really have to analyze the surplus because if you don't have it long-term, which we, we're not going to, we can't, we can't expend it now.
I, I think we're gonna have new, because there, there's things that you can predict and you want a predictable system. Ideally, you want something that's as predictable as, you know, as, as much as you can. Ideally, you want something that's as predictable as, you know, as, as much as you can. But, but that's typically not possible in all stages, right? I think we're going to have new school board members, we have a new superintendent coming in. I think we have to be smarter is how we strategize on how to get to those Lee County School Board members and, and present this. And, and we really didn't do that this, this last time around. We did one presentation to the entire board, we didn't have the individual meetings. So I think there's another set of strategies we can work with, how else can we collaborate with Lee County School District where potentially more funding's available, right?
And I think maybe we should start doing that now as our campaign.
Right.
And we know who.
As, as.
We gotta wait for new school board members. You gotta wait for new school board members.
I'm saying maybe we start now.
Candidates.
With the candidates that are campaigning.
Oh, yeah, I'm doing that as, as I go to all the campaign rallies, I'm, I'm already working it because that way I know who I'm going to vote for. So, I mean, it's pretty simple. And the other thing that we had talked about during the first session, $100,000 is, is a lot of money, but it might not be a lot of money if we could get some people to donate within the community to build those playgrounds. Like the Gunterberg Foundation, I know they're already supporters and the RIS Foundation, but there's got to be some other people out there that we can look to and, and that's what we've got to look at, is see if we can find some private money to do that.
But it's a one-time expense and we have surplus to do it. We can't use, it's, it's, we're, we're on shaky ground if we use that surplus to fund teacher salaries because.
Right.
Over the long run, it won't exist any longer.
But if we do find some money to donate to do the playgrounds, then that frees up that money.
No.
Initially, not long-term.
Initially, initially.
Initially, but not long-term.
But not long-term.
So it's my understanding that, that the playgrounds are in like really bad shape, correct?
Yes.
Yeah.
They're going to be demolished.
So, I mean, I think that, I mean, I just, I want to just make sure that it's clear that like we need them, right? And the kids need them and the students, the kids need that.
Well, I agree with the vice chairman.
Yes, they need that time to play, they need that time to get that energy out, you know, there's, so I just want to just make sure that that's very clear. Because I haven't seen them, but I've just heard, you know, that they're in, in really bad. And, yeah, I just want to make sure that it's very clear that they're like needed and there's urgency here.
Because when you make the statement that we. Something about we don't need playgrounds, but we really do?
We don't have to replace the playgrounds.
That's what you said, we don't have to replace.
But we really should.
No, we do, yeah.
We're not required to offer playgrounds, but we need to have playgrounds.
When you made that statement, I just wanted to make sure that you really didn't mean that.
Right. So that's, that's really, I, I know it's disappointing for you, it's disappointing for me, it's disappointing for the principals, but this is, this is where we are. And until the state funding increases or we, we receive extra additional funding, we're going to need to be very, very careful in, in, in how we approach things like teacher salaries that are an ongoing compounding expense.
I mean, one of my nephews teaches for Lee County School District, he was surprised to receive two additional paychecks last Friday, a couple Fridays ago. And he was, you know, and, and it was for all those teachers that had stayed throughout the school year. And that was one of the retention checks, right?
Right.
And so it was, so they're, they're making a significant investment. Now, again, different environment, different, different issues, they may need to do it a little bit more than, than what we might need to do, but, but those kinds of tactics are taking place, right? And who knows if they'll be suc, as successful, but that's one of the ways that Lee County School District is moving ahead, right?
Now, we're going to try to reallocate as much as, as much excess money in ESSR as we can to provide bonuses, the premium pay. I think that's valued. And I, I think it, it, it keeps people happy, it's a bonus, it's taxed at a different level, but it, it keeps them happy. So if we can do, we, we, we absolutely want to do one in the fall, and if there's another one that we can reallocate for, we will do that. There are several other grants that are coming through, and if we can supplant, or we can, you know, supplant some of our S R three funds with those grants, that'll free up more money to give those, those retention bonuses for our teachers. So that's really what we have to look for, is that funding for them.
We, we have that, are we generally in agreement that they move ahead with the recommendation of the 1%?
Yeah, I don't think we have a choice.
So you have that clear direction, right?
Thank you.
The other question was, shoot, no, that was, that was the one you need, is there anything else that you need direction on or? I, I think we need to be a little bit more precise on our plan moving forward though to go after more revenue. Oh, yeah, yeah. Well, I think. That's what we need to start thinking about, but we know they've given us the best budget they could possibly give us at this point. Right. Knowing the impact of what that, what that may, may be with the teacher salaries. So, I mean, we don't really have a choice. Yeah.
And I'd like to reiterate, we know.
People need to learn how to use their phones.
We know money talks, we know that we have to do that. But I think that we have to start thinking outside of the box and what alternative things that we can offer as incentives for teachers to stay with us or come join us. Like I said, I know money is number one, but we have to distinguish ourselves somehow, some way to make teachers want to come and stay with us. I don't know what that looks like, but we have to. Sounds like we have to come up.
We, we, we're doing it, and I think the ESSR funding that, that will bring in more coaches and more interventionists to take some of the pressure off the classroom, regular classroom teacher, I think that's going to be, that's going to be a big help too. So we're, we're trying to do everything in our power to, to, to.
Yeah.
You know, attract and recruit and retain them, but that, but unfortunately, you know, the, the, the salary bonuses that Lee County is giving is just not going to be a part of our world right now.
Right, not the same level?
We're going to have to focus on, we're not one of them. We are our own entity and the benefits, and if you live in Cape Coral and you work in Cape Coral, that's going to be where we're going to focus.
Right.
Just like you said, we're, we're not going to compete dollar to dollar. So we got to look at the other things. You know, we're not Lee County School Board, so you don't have to do, deal with all of that. And if you live here and work here, it's better for your car, better for your dad, it's better for that.
Right.
So that's, that's where our strengths are, is recruiting from within our city.
Employer choice.
Yeah.
Doctor Meehan.
Employer choice, correct.
Some Superintendent Collins, excuse my ignorance here for a second. So let's say that there were conversations with Lee County and they were, they wanted, they were willing to share the, the sales tax money, right? Is that money though able to be applied to salary increases?
No.
Okay.
That could offset other costs.
Okay.
Like technology.
Okay.
Which is a huge expense for us.
Okay.
That would be, that would probably be the biggest cost savings for us.
So like technology purchases and?
Premium boards, laptops, teacher stations, Chromebooks, docu cams, iPads, that, that would be huge.
Textbooks?
No.
Textbooks are separate, yeah. Okay. Okay, I just wanted, that was, was a question I had.
Other, in other structures, right, other nonprofit structures, you might have a finance committee, right? And that finance committee looks at these kinds of issues and then, you know, a smaller group has the opportunity to meet, again, with, with the team and then make recommendations back to the board and the staff, right? So that might be a committee that we want to operationalize as an ad hoc committee. There may be something completely separate, like a, a recruiting strategy committee where, so, so as an example, a number of years back, I was on the Equity and Diversity Committee for Lee County School District, and we made a recommendation that they're having, you know, issues with, they always have issues with teachers, right? Going to Puerto Rico to recruit. So they went to Puerto Rico and they found 35 teachers that were willing to come over. English.
We did it with engineers this year.
English, Spanish, credentials, and they wanted to move, right? So, so there's, there's other ways that maybe if you think outside of just, just our own, our own area where people are really willing to come over, and, and they've been pretty successful. So now Lee County probably has a number of teachers from, and, and the way Puerto Rico had set it up is they have an organization that's set to facilitate that. So it's not like you have to reinvent the wheel over and over again, right? So, so there's, there's opportunities like that that, that might, might exist. So I think a recruiting strategy committee could potentially bring forward some other ideas and assist the team to, to, to consider other ways.
Not for an immediate solution, but in the future, if, I don't know how this works with the city yet, but we now have a grant specialist which we didn't have before. And you don't have somebody that's totally devoted to grants, I'm assuming, because you're doing everything else. So maybe we can speak, I can, speak through the city manager and see if it's Matt Grambo that has come over from Fort Myers and he's working here. And he is now the grant specialist. And we learned a lot when we went to Governor DeSantis's office and met with Dane Eagle. And we learned that we're missing a lot of grant opportunities on every level. And so he gave us some pointers, we had Zoom meetings and training, so maybe that, I mean, it's, grants are never affixed today, maybe two years out, but it could be a start is to have another eye looking for our grant opportunities that we don't know about.
That's a great idea.
So I'll, I'll talk to Rob and see if he's willing to share Matt in those particular areas.
Terrific.
Okay.
Your smaller community ideas is.
Yeah, it's a good idea. It's a great idea.
It'd be very useful.
Sooner than later.
Yeah, because it seems like where the crisis.
So do we want to, do we want to operationalize a, a finance committee at a minimum to start?
Well, if not that, maybe we look at the budget more often, open it up more often instead of this once a year cycle. I know it's traumatic doing budgets, but wouldn't it be great if we just increased the visibility on it, you know, because we're looking at a three-year budget now? Let's look at it mid-year, six months.
Absolutely. We, and we do a budget amendment usually mid-year.
And we get you.
Right.
So maybe we just need to increase the cycle.
Yes, and I think.
Add that too, yeah.
Having these meetings after a meeting is probably very beneficial too.
I think normally, Mark Mason would be a contributing factor to those meetings. He, he needs to be here with us. He was under the weather tonight and he couldn't stay, but I think he would welcome that and he can give us, you know, he can, he can give us the guidance. I, I don't know if the board knows, but Marion Monets will not be returning after June 30th. She.
But that's about you, Marion.
She will not, she's not going to work for the city, she's going to pursue other interests. So, so we will be heavily reliant on the city and the finance department to help us manage that budget, and having a committee would be ideal, I think.
Okay. So, so if anybody would like to volunteer for that committee, just let, let us know and.
Who has the funding stock? He seems to love the recruitment.
Volunteer it.
One volunteer.
I heard it.
Yeah. And, and with, with committees like this, you don't necessarily need all of us to be board members on the committee, it could be some, some other interested parties, some parents.
I think you should have a banker.
Yeah, like a banker.
We should have a local community banker person.
Yeah. And potentially somebody from the chamber that knows other contacts. Right, so.
Yes, we do. You don't work that.
Unless we have those meetings here.
Sure, yeah.
Where everybody can participate because, because it's in, it's in public. Otherwise, one board member only.
Yeah, are we allowed to have more than one board member on our committee? No. Not more than one board member, right?
You can on a special committee that you're going to.
Right.
It's not like you want to create, you don't have to be a board member.
Yeah.
They could be an advisor to the board.
Right. And I could, I could help you, I could help structure that with you.
I'll work on the mayor.
Okay, all right, that's a start.
So really, am I correct, Marion? That concludes our, our budget workshop. We have some good direction. Like I said, this is, this is, it, it's a great next couple of years because we are balanced. I want to remind you that last year we went into, we dug into reserves in about 2 million. And we're finally in a position where we don't have to do that.
Be proud of that.
We can be proud of that.
Yeah.
Yeah. So, thank you kindly for your input, it's greatly appreciated. Marion now will have some direction and she will, at our next meeting on June 14th, present what we've discussed, so for adoption.
Anything else before we conclude? There's a May 27th State of the Schools event for, for Lee County School District at the Broadway Palm, 7 to 9 a.m. So if anybody, they, they do this each year. And so it's interesting to see the contrast, right, of how they're presenting their school district versus how we, we look at it. So if anybody was interested, that's, that's an open event. That's May 27th.
Yeah, the next.
Oh, uh, next board meeting is March, uh, June 14th, 5:30 to 7:30.
And I just wanted to say, I feel like if I say it out loud, I'll remember in the fall. So for the administrators, FTCU, the College of Ed does a recruitment fair in the fall and in the spring. Our semesters are a little bit shorter, so, you know, just something to keep in mind if you, you know, we have all kinds of agencies that show up, it's not just schools, it's actually, you know, there's like Lee Health Developmental Center, so it's like, it's open, you know, so I can definitely give you that contact information.
That would be great, we'll take it.
Did we need to vote on the high school accreditation through Lee County School District? Didn't I see a memo about that? No?
Are you talking about the charter renewal?
Right.
Okay, so that process is, is already in place. The agreement is in the legal department at Lee County. Our legal team has reviewed it. We, the city council needs to approve it first and then it goes on the Lee County School District's agenda at the end of June. It has to be formalized and approved by June 30th.
They don't have to take action on that.
No. The next step is that city council will approve it, I don't know the date, do you, Kathleen? I think it's June 8th, there is a placeholder on their agenda so that they, they can adopt it.
Okay, perfect.